Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March seventeen meeting of the Planning, Zoning and the City Council, City of Beaumont. If you please call the roll.
Chairman Najad?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Jabar?
Present.
Commissioner Jabia?
Here.
Commissioner Javed?
Here.
Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Macon?
Here.
Commissioner Noyola is absent. Commissioner Senagar?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Sorrell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and good afternoon again. The, for the members of the commission, you have been sent the minutes of the meeting of February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. I would entertain a motion to approve and/or any comments to make revisions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? None, it's Hertz. It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. We're gonna go to the first case of our regular meeting, PZ two zero two five four seven. And good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Fitz and Shipman is requesting approval of the preliminary plat for Whispering Heights, Phase Two. Conditional approval was previously granted in April of two thousand twenty-two. Because no final plat has been recorded, the preliminary plat must come back before the commission for another conditional approval because per section twenty-six point zero-two point zero-zero-two C of the Code of Ordinances, preliminary plats have a two-year time limit. So this is the same exact plan coming before you. It's a five-point-five acre development located north of the recently completed Rayhan Wood Street and will feature eighteen new residential lots on the proposed residential street of Tahere Wood and Yasmin Wood. The proposed residential streets will have a fifty-foot right-of-way with twenty-seven feet in pavement width. All lots will access Point Parkway through the extension of Mumtaz Drive. Water and sewer services will be provided by extension of city utilities. Planning staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, correct the right-of-way width and pavement width for Mumtaz Drive to be in compliance with section twenty-six point zero-three point zero-zero-two sub-part four of the city's Code of Ordinances. Number two, space streetlights to make city, to meet city subdivision ordinance requirements. Revise the street layout plan to meet the city ordinance requirements. Number three, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for the water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number four, relocate the city, the sanitary sewer service connections to be offset from the telecom and energy easement for blocks five through seven, as shown in detail H twenty-nine of the submitted construction plan set. And number five, submit an updated master plan prior to the recordation of this plat. The item was sent to all interested parties. They all reviewed. The item on your, on the screen is the preliminary plat and review. And then we also have the developer, or I'm sorry, the engineer of record, present.
Any questions for the lady? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernardino Tristan with Fitz and Shipman here in Beaumont, fourteen zero five Cornerstone Court. On behalf of the, the owner and developer, I'd like to thank you to appreciate to revise this or update this preliminary plat. The construction plans have already been submitted and they're actually under construction. It's just the two-year span for the preliminary plat has expired.
This is the one that you had a turn and it was going to nowhere, basically, and then the continuation is in the next phase, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I remember that. Great. Any questions for the gentleman? None? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have the applicant and also the report from the staff, and I'll look for a motion on PZ two zero two five four seven.
Motion to approve, file PZ two thousand twenty-five forty-seven.
Is that with the conditions?
With the conditions listed.
Five conditions, right?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve and a second?
Second.
Second. Is it any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. This concludes our regular meeting. If you indulge us, we're gonna wait another five minutes and get started with our joint meeting. Somebody said they saw them outside. They're not outside.
For the council.
I don't know.
Yes, this one.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna get started with PZ two zero two five dash two five.
Good afternoon. Mr. Lucas is requesting a rezone for the one-acre property at six-six-ninety Rebecca Lane, located at the intersection of Rebecca Lane and Comstock Road. Mr. Lucas seeks to change the zoning from residential single-family to general commercial multiple-family dwelling district or a more restrictive zoning district. This request follows a violation notice from the planning department indicating that his business, Lucas Lawn Service and Landscaping, is not in compliance with the city's adopted code of ordinances. This application was tabled at the February twenty-fourth meeting of the planning commission to allow time for the applicant to provide additional information. The information requested from the applicant was listed in the staff memo. I'll go ahead and read them aloud. So first one was how many employees were there? There's three to five. Office hours are eight to four-thirty. The business has been operating since early two thousand twenty-five. Where, where was the business prior to the location? He worked for Alco. Business began in early two thousand twenty-five. The property owner's occupation to the landscaping business, or prior to the landscaping business, he worked for Alco. How long has the property owner been in the landscaping business since early two thousand twenty-five? Are there any loud noises? No, they never start equipment there. How long is the gate along Comstock? It's approximately fifteen feet. If we were to approve this rezoning request, it could result in spot zoning, introducing a high-density commercial use into a predominantly single-family residential, or residential single-family area. This includes surrounding properties such as Lefler Park to the west. The proposed rezoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan of Beaumont. The comprehensive plan states that this is a stable area. The definition of that is characterized by good to excellent structural conditions and neighborhoods that are free from blighting influences such as incompatible land uses, dilapidated buildings, and deteriorated infrastructure. So this zoning request doesn't align with the zoning immediately surrounding it nor the comprehensive plan. The area outlined in red, we'll go back one slide. The area outlined in red on the screen is the area under review. So they're wanting to change the yellow color to a purple color within that outlined area. Aerial image. Subject property. Rear of the subject property. Continued. Northwest, that's Lefler Park. To the east. To the south. And to the west. We sent out thirteen property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. And I do not believe that the applicant is here. I'm sorry. Planning staff recommends denial of this request.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the lady? All right, folks, we discussed this quite at length last time and have given the applicant an opportunity to come back and state their case, and they're not here. So I would, I guess, entertain a motion. Well, wait a minute. We do have, we do have public comment and we need to go ahead and hear from the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? No public comments, so we close the public hearing. And with that, I would ask for a motion.
Make a motion to deny.
Second. We have a motion to deny, and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna go to PZ two zero two five four one.
Mohammed Tehani is requesting approval of a specific use permit to allow a retail liquor store to be located at thirty-one-hundred North Major Drive, Suite Two, one hundred. Tejas Liquor would be open Monday through Saturday, ten a.m. to nine p.m., and closed on Sundays. They will offer sodas, drink mixes, beer, wine, and other spirits. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. And number two, shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. We sent forty-two property owner notices. We received two in favor, favor stating they have no problem whatsoever, and then five in opposition, opposition stating they already have enough liquor stores. The stores are linked with crime. The store is too close in proximity to single-family homes and children. The area outlined in red on the screen is the area under review. You'll see this property come back. They're, it's a new development. It's, it's zoned as GCMD two, which means that they're probably going to need a specific use permit for most uses that are gonna go in there. So you'll see this property come up often. Aerial image. This is the subject property. To the north. To the east. And west. And I believe we have the applicant and property owner present.
Great, thank you. Any questions? And the applicant? Good afternoon. If you would state your name and address for the record, please, and we'd love to hear any comments you have or additional details that you might be able to provide to us.
My name is Tahira Shafi, thirty-one-hundred North Major Drive, Beaumont, the shopping center. Mr. Kareem.
I'm Kareem Tejani, addressing thirty-one-hundred North Major Drive, Suite Two Hundred. We run and operate eighteen liquor stores in Beaumont area and throughout the Haring County, you know, Orange County. And we're requesting that this is a great location for a liquor store, so people don't have to drive across the street, go towards Dublin Road and all that. So we're gonna provide them over there selling liquor, soda, water, providing all the needed stuff for the liquor stores.
All right. Some of the complaints or the people who send notices against your project is the noise and also that the store would bring crime to the neighborhood. Do you have any comments?
So far, we don't have any particular crime in any of our store, none whatsoever. And there is no noise. Customer comes, nice customer comes, suited customers, and we have no complaints, no police records so far in any of our stores.
All right. Any questions for the gentleman?
I have one. Do you guys plan on installing a security camera system?
Yes, we do.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Nobody? So we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant. He answered a couple of comments that we had by the mail, and I would entertain a motion.
We approve with two positions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Well, great. Now we do have a presentation, I believe, that you have?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. So there was a buzz recent, thank you, guys. There was a buzz regarding an entertainment district recently. So I'm gonna discuss the key characteristics, differences, and overlapping aspects of the comprehensive plan.
Why don't you wait, let these fellows?
Okay. So there was a buzz recently regarding entertainment districts. So I'm gonna discuss the key characteristics, differences, and overlapping aspects between the comprehensive plan, entertainment districts, and planning studies, and hopefully to receive some feedback from y'all and also council on a favorable path forward. So to start, our city's comprehensive plan has not been updated since two thousand three. Staff is seeking a grant through the general land office to fund this, and we're hopeful to be recipients in the near future. Typically, a comprehensive plan should be updated every five years or as needed to adapt to the development needs of the city. So a comprehensive plan is a long-range plan for a community's future, and it covers a wide range of topics such as land use, transportation, housing, infrastructure, economic development, and environmental protection. It also provides the foundation for land use regulations, zoning ordinances, and other decisions related to development and infrastructure. Planning studies are intended to be guiding documents for development and zoning regulation. These studies analyze existing regulations, proposed changes, and proposed changes to accommodate development while still addressing community concerns. Some key elements of a planning study involve land use analysis, infrastructure planning, community engagement, and environmental impact assessments. Next, what is an entertainment district? It's a defined area that focuses on nightlife, leisure, sporting, and/or cultural activities. Common features of those are restaurants, bars, theaters, live music. These areas typically include walkable streets, enhanced public spaces, zoning regulations that support extended business hours and entertainment uses. Good examples of entertainment districts are Times Square, Bourbon Street, San Antonio's Riverwalk, areas like that. So there's some differences between planning studies and districts, and they're largely driven by timing of implementation. So the purpose of an entertainment district, enhance nightlife, cultural activities. Planning study is to guide the development and zoning. Key elements of each, so for entertainment districts, is businesses, public spaces, events. For a planning study, land use, infrastructure, and policy. Implementation of a entertainment district is generally private sector-driven with public support. Planning study is normally government-led so that we can seek community input. The duration for an entertainment district is continuous. Planning study is temporary assessment leading to policy changes. And then there's also some overlapping aspects. So development is shaped and guided by a comprehensive plan. Planning studies shape and guide development. Entertainment districts are shaped and guided by planning studies and/or comprehensive plans. So typically, your districts are produced by a strong comprehensive plan or planning study to then guide towards your comprehensive plan. So downtown as an entertainment district. So the central business district, it has the bones definitely for regarding, regarding to existing infrastructure and the aesthetics of it, especially when you think of Orlean Street, kind of a promenade with business, businesses that are fronting the streets. Establishment of a district is typically derived from a public-private partnership, and further, private investors must see a public investment to attract such districts as these developments typically come in as million-to-multi-million-dollar investments. So I wanna talk about some of the things that City of Beaumont has done initiative-wise in downtown for revitalization to date. So the first is public improvements. Right now, we're in the process of restoring Riverfront Park. Calder Avenue was improved, I believe it was in two, twenty thirteen, around that time. Public investment, acquisition and demolition of five-five-five Main Street. We established a TERS, improve, or we're improving economic development incentives, trying to get the word out there for developers that they can capitalize on these incentives that we have instead of it being, I guess, less visible. We want it to be more visible. We want everyone to know that that's there. But they, we also have a Main Street program that was established in nineteen ninety-one. They, any, in the commercial historic district, downtown district, anyone who wants to improve their building, there's facade grants out there. And so we connect you with the executive director, Tom Bell, to help you seek those, those grants. That's normally through historic tax credit incentives. We also, the city also established a strategic, strategic plan, and then there's also the twenty-thirty-five plan that's out there. So vibrant downtown waterfront promenade, including an indoor/outdoor shopping and dining experiences, those kinds of things. And again, a lot of this is very much so in infancy, infancy stage. So improving public safety, we're, we're trying to improve public safety, so by doing that, it's an increased enforcement of property codes or maintenance codes downtown. We adopted the vacant building registry for the central business district and the lower Calder area. The idea behind the lower Calder area is that's more of a gateway into downtown, so that needs to be vibrant as well. We've recently addressed some zoning regulations, so amending the permitted use table. That came in late two thousand twenty-four, I believe it was in November. We expanded the uses that are allowed by right within the central business district, trying to lessen, lessen red tape where we can, where it makes sense, where it's sensible, increasing the housing uses that are allowed in the central business district. So you guys were successful in doing that. So looking to the future, public realm improvements. We also, and so by public realm improvements, we've acquired, we've acquired five-five-five Main, and a lot of that is to riverfront expansion or potential to riverfront expansion. And by that, I mean the park, not necessarily a riverfront, but the park. By showing that we're, we're doing these kinds of improvements, we're able to, we're able to show the private sector that we are actually investing and wanting to, wanting to change the scope of downtown. And there's also a hotel feasibility study that is being conducted, and we anticipate the results of that to come back in April of this year. The city's economic development manager, Christina Lowkey, is looking to improve our current neighborhood empowerment zone policy to offer increased incentives. I also wanna point out that entertainment districts are not always just for entertainment. There, there's a rise of innovation districts, there's a rise of cultural districts, art districts, all those kinds of things. And so since we're in the very infancy stage of revitalization, I do encourage and urge commission and council to keep their options open so that we can find exactly what the community needs by way of the comprehensive plan process. And again, I mentioned the hotel, I mentioned the twenty-thirty-five plan. This, this is all infancy, whether it were to go that way, whether it were not to go that way. I want to make sure that we are establishing studies, districts through the comprehensive plan, allowing that to be a guiding portal for us. So in conclusion, the establishment of a district is ideal in conjunction with an updated comprehensive plan and to drive that, or, and to drive within the private sector for it. In the meantime, I wanna ensure, ensure that we address community concerns and encourage growth. We should proceed with a planning study and use that as a guiding document while we seek funding for our comprehensive plan, again, through the GLO. We have submitted an application for that. Street, kind of a promenade with business, businesses that are fronting the streets. Establishment of a district is typically derived from a public-private partnership, and further, private investors must see a public investment to attract such districts as these developments typically come in as million-to-multi-million dollar investments. So I want to talk about some of the things that City of Beaumont has done initiative-wise in downtown for revitalization to date. So the first is public improvements. Right now, we're in the process of restoring Riverfront Park. Calder Avenue was improved, I believe it was in 2013, around that time. Public investment, acquisition and demolition of 555 Main Street. We established a terrors, improve, or we're improving economic development incentives, trying to get the word out there for developers that they can capitalize on these incentives that we have instead of it being, I guess, less visible. We want it to be more visible. We want everyone to know that that's there. But they, we also have a Main Street program that was established in 1991. They, any, in the Commercial Historic District, Downtown District, anyone who wants to improve their building, there's facade grants out there. And so we connect you with the Executive Director, Tom Bell, to help you seek those, those grants. That's normally through historic tax credit incentives. We also, the city also established a strategic, strategic plan, and then there's also the 2035 Plan that's out there. So vibrant downtown waterfront promenade, including an indoor/outdoor shopping and dining experiences, those kinds of things. And again, a lot of this is very much so in infancy, infancy stage. So improving public safety, we're, we're trying to improve public safety, so by doing that, it's an increased enforcement of property codes or maintenance codes downtown. We adopted the vacant building registry for the Central Business District and the lower Calder area. The idea behind the lower Calder area is that's more of a gateway into downtown, so that needs to be vibrant as well. We've recently addressed some zoning regulations, so amending the permitted use table. That came in late 2024, I believe it was in November. We expanded the uses that are allowed by right within the Central Business District, trying to lessen, lessen red tape where we can, where it makes sense, where it's sensible, increasing the housing uses that are allowed in the Central Business District. So you guys were successful in doing that. So looking to the future, public realm improvements. We also, and so by public realm improvements, we've acquired, we've acquired 555 Main, and a lot of that is to riverfront expansion or potential to riverfront expansion. And by that, I mean the park, not necessarily a riverfront, but the park. By showing that we're, we're doing these kinds of improvements, we're able to, we're able to show the private sector that we are actually investing and wanting to, wanting to change the scope of downtown. And there's also a hotel feasibility study that is being conducted, and we anticipate the results of that to come back in April of this year. The city's Economic Development Manager, Christina Lowkey, is looking to improve our current neighborhood empowerment zone policy to offer increased incentives. I also want to point out that entertainment districts are not always just for entertainment. There, there's a rise of innovation districts, there's a rise of cultural districts, art districts, all those kinds of things. And so since we're in the very infancy stage of revitalization, I do encourage and urge commission and council to keep their options open so that we can find exactly what the community needs by way of the comprehensive plan process. And again, I mentioned the hotel, I mentioned the 2035 Plan. This, this is all infancy, whether it were to go that way, whether it were not to go that way. I want to make sure that we are establishing studies, districts through the comprehensive plan, allowing that to be a guiding portal for us. So in conclusion, the establishment of a district is ideal in conjunction with an updated comprehensive plan and to drive that, or and to drive within the private sector for it. In the meantime, I want to ensure, ensure that we address community concerns and encourage growth. We should proceed with a planning study and use that as a guiding document while we seek funding for our comprehensive plan, again, through the GLO. We have submitted an application for that, so we hope to hear from them soon. For example, the city receives a specific use permit, and the planning study should be used to evaluate the request to guide the commission and council to a sound decision, whether they should be there or whether they should not. And so with that, I just want to ensure that the city remains strategic in its planning efforts towards downtown revitalization. So at this time, staff does recommend that we move forward with initiating a planning study to ensure that we align with that comprehensive plan rather than establishing a district downtown. I think that there is, I think there's potential for it. There definitely is potential for it, but we want to be strategic in what kind of district downtown? Does it have to be entertainment? Can we do an innovative, innovation district? Can we do cultural arts? Whatever the, the city wants. And with that, with that comprehensive plan update, there is going to be a lot of community engagement so that we can get the stakeholder input and implement exactly what they want down here, because it is, after all, their quality of life, the sentiment, the citizens that are here. So we want to deliver what, what they want to see. So with that, I am requesting any feedback from y'all, from council. If you guys are okay with me moving forward on a planning study versus trying to immediately roll out a district, those kinds of things.
Any questions?
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, what are the, the boundaries of the district?
Yeah, so right now, let me actually, is this connected to the internet? I'll have Elena pull up the zoning map. So the district in my mind, if there were a district to be implemented, it would be concentrated to, you know, a few streets or maybe even less. Typically, you close those streets off during a certain period of time so that it's walkable, it's safe for everyone that's enjoying that area. So it won't be the entirety of the Central Business District, which is what I'm trying to show you guys on here, because the Central Business District is rather large or larger than we think. So it would be really concentrated to probably closer to our Commercial Historic Downtown District. And I say our, but that's really a, a Texas Historic Commission-initiated district, so the state.
She's looking for that. Is this all contingent on the funding from a grant from GLO or you have other funding?
No, so a planning study can be done with the existing staff that I have, but a comprehensive plan update, that's, that's a very, it's a massive process. It, it really is a, a driving plan for like, infrastructure, economic development, zoning. It, it really is, is multi-departmental. So that's what we're seeking funding for, to allow us to or produce an RFP to go get a professional consultant to help us through that process and make sure that we do, do it right. And so we've, we've submitted an application to the GLO for about $300,000, and we're hopeful to receive that money. I do know that if we were to be given that, we have 24 months to complete the comprehensive plan, so that's kind of a timeline, should we get that, should we get that funding? And that always can be lessened, but, or the time can always be lessened, but that's how long we have to expend those funds.
But the preliminary study that you're proposing or you're asking can be done with your current staff?
I'm sorry?
The study that you're asking for, the preliminary one, can be done with your own staff?
It can, it can. And really, the, the main thing is that I want to, I want to do the planning study so we can guide our decisions via specific use permit, rezoning requests, all those kinds of things. That can be done with existing staff. But to do the comprehensive, I, I want that planning study to be in place before we establish a district. I think a district is going to be more private sector-driven than, than public sector. The planning study, study is going to be more public sector to ensure that we set up, set up the opportunity for a district, whether that be an entertainment, whether that be an innovation, cultural, you know, any kind of district, because there really is a, there really is a turn here recently, it, where entertainment districts are not just for sports, bars, and live music. It's, it's really starting to become a, become a lot more than just that.
Well, I encourage you to put this on city council's agenda and get approval. It sounds like something that's worthwhile, or at least is going to get us started. When you get your, your funding, you would be able to, you have the pre-work done already.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the commission?
Is this going to be patterned after one particular city? I know you listed several, or how are you going to determine?
Right now, for the planning study, I'm really going to look at what, what is our existing community concern? Some of them is, or some of it is like, live music venues that are near residential areas. How can we help mitigate that until we bring in or, or update our comprehensive plan to match that, that development? What is, what does our zoning look like in certain areas? Does that need to be amended? What does, what are some of the, really, what are some of the challenges that we're facing? And so by doing that, we're basically going to go through a lot of the special, or, sorry, specific use permit requests, evaluating how did that affect certain things? Where are areas where it's not going to be a specific use request? How can we help mitigate those issues that arise on areas that are allowed by right? You know, it, it really is going to be a in-depth, an in-depth look. A lot of it will be conducted by me and my planning staff.
Have you guys done a lessons learned from Crockett Street? I mean, that used to be a great start, and it was apparent that it had a lot of management issues, but is there official study to show why that thing didn't progress like it was planned for it to be?
There's no official study, but that's one of the things that we would need to look at in this planning study. I, I understand some of the challenges. I wasn't necessarily here, but I understand or have heard some of the challenges that arose from that, so that's definitely something to look at.
At the time, it looked like an awful promising thing, and then it just kept going down, so.
Yeah.
It, it would be interesting to, to do a lessons learned from that project.
Yeah.
They spend a lot of money on it. Any comments from the council? Audman's just dying to say something.
Will the community be involved in helping with the planning?
Yeah, I'm sure that we will have at, at one point a community input. I know specifically for downtown, like, we'll invite, I plan on inviting property owners and also tenants to a meeting so that we can, like, address some of the challenges or get a better understanding so that we can produce a guide that will, that will help.
Okay, I'd like to say that I was a part of the Crockett Street project when it came to town, so if you need any information from me, I can certainly benefit you.
I will be calling you.
All right.
Fantastic. Thank you for taking this on.
I think it's great, it sounds like a great way to move forward.
Okay, good deal.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, we're done for today, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I almost record time, but thank y'all.
What, did you say we're adjourned? You did say that. I'm, I'm sitting until you say it.